All right, first on the list here is consent agenda. Is there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing no comment, entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Collins.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. I'm going to pull this over to Paul for open forum. We got introduction of the new general manager.
Michael, would you like to come up to the podium? Joined us here in August, Michael is the general manager for Swiftell Center with Spectra, the new contracting firm that we have. So, Michael, this is an opportunity for you to introduce yourself to the council, but also those members of the public that are watching at home as well.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, council. Like Paul mentioned, I'm the new general manager of the Swiftell Center. I took over operations of the building as of August 1st. Been in Brookings now since July 31st. Definitely excited to be here. I was meeting with the staff all through the summer through, once we awarded the contract and I knew that I was potentially coming here, I started to meet with them and, you know, there's just been a great road so far. Everybody here in town, the staff, you all that I've met have been so welcoming, so thank you. A little bit of background about me. From New York originally, moved to Colorado at 17. Got my bachelor's and master's in tourism management from Colorado State University. Then started working for Spectra, it was Global Spectrum at the time. Geez, close to a decade ago. And I've been growing with them ever since. I was in Loveland at the Budweiser Event Center for six years and then in Des Moines, Iowa, the Iowa Event Center before and after that. And then was just recently in the Chicagoland area at a place called the Now Arena. It's in Hoffman Estates, Illinois. I was the assistant GM there. And then fortunate enough to get this opportunity to come to Brookings. And, you know, so far the community has been really welcoming. I have a wife, two young children at home. Liam, he's two and a half. And Cooper, he's actually four months. So this has been an interesting couple of months as well on the personal side. And I got a dog, Oliver. Just, you know, I came here and visited in June and felt like the comparison between Chicagoland and Brookings was pretty much a no-brainer for my family. So more on the professional side, just really, you know, touring the facility, thought that it was a great step for me. I'm just looking forward to things I can improve at Swiftell Center for not only you guys, but the community itself. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Of course.
Okay. Is Anna here tonight? Yes, she is. We have a student presentation from Anna.
I'm Anna Shane, the government affairs chair for the STSCU Students Association. Happy to be back on their behalf tonight. I have the following updates. Last night, the Students Association met for our 2021 Senate training. We covered relevant topics such as expectations, writing legislation, parliamentary procedure and committees. It was great to be all together and to start to converse about what we want to do this school year. Our first official meeting is next Monday night. Moving into university updates, move-in was of course this past weekend, so campus was abuzz with meet-state activities. However, due to weather, the Student Engagement Expo was moved to this upcoming Sunday. Here and going forward, not only SA, but all clubs and organizations are ready to engage with the new students, students we might not have connected with last year and the Brookings community. Students are also enjoying a newly renovated University Student Union featuring updated meeting rooms in an all-around facelift. It's really nice. With COVID-19 still being a part of our day-to-day life, the jacks are back, Task Force continually monitors the pandemic, STSCU is offering a more normal fall semester. We are excited to have all-in-person classes, active student orgs and fall athletics. But in pursuit of that more normal fall semester, on-campus COVID testing, quarantine isolation housing and vaccine clinics are still being offered. And finally, tomorrow's the third day of classes, so we're all kind of getting back into the swing of things and it's been really exciting. So thanks for your time and I'll stand by for any questions.
Anyone on council got questions for? Easy again.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public that requests time right now to make a comment that doesn't have anything to do with what's on our agenda this evening? Please state your name, Mr. Walker.
Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. I, but this is ridiculous. You people ask for comments from the public and then you only allow, give them three minutes? You're censoring them, they're not allowing the state what they want to say. I don't care if there's a line of people out the door. People deserve to be heard. If I, if I prepare, take my time to prepare a statement and I get halfway through it and this little buzzer goes off and you tell me to go sit down, that's not right. You guys serve us, the public. We deserve our time to be heard. There hasn't been anybody that's been coming in here rambling on and on again for hours on end. Most people take the time to get their points across clearly and succinctly. So this is bad as far as I'm concerned. People deserve the right to be heard and they should not be censored by our public servants. Thank you.
Wants to bring anything up at the moment? Okay, so let's move on to item 6A. Discussion possible action on resolution 21-072, an emergency resolution providing recommendations deemed necessary to slow the community spread of coronavirus in the city of Brookings, South Dakota. I'll put this over to Paul now and he'll explain a little bit more on the points that we have on the resolution.
Thank you. At last week's work session, an update of South Dakota and Brookings' COVID-19 situation was given to the public and city council. Brookings is now in high community spread and it's assumed 90% of the new cases is the Delta variant. The new variant is more infectious even amongst vaccinated individuals as we understand. The Brookings County today had 18 additional new cases reported and for a total of 95 new cases for the county. In total, we've only lost 37 lives to date to COVID-19 in Brookings County. Unfortunately, 37 lives. Approximately 42.7% of the county population has been fully vaccinated and that's including those even below 12 years of age. Tonight, council is presented with a resolution.
Paul, this gentleman can't hear you.
We do, we do have hearing devices available if you should want one. I apologize for that, sir, but I'm not taking off my mask, but we do have hearing devices available, should you want one. Thank you, sir. Tonight, council is presented with a resolution recommending for this community. Indoor masking should be used when social distancing cannot be achieved regardless of vaccination status. All individuals two years and older wear face masks unless medical or developmental conditions prohibit the use. All eligible individuals should receive the COVID-19 vaccination. Stay six feet away from others when possible. Avoid crowds in poorly vented areas. Wash your hands and clean disinfect areas often. Cover coughs and sneezes. Monitor health daily and follow the Center for Disease Control and Prevention guidance if symptoms develop. This, once again, is a recommending resolution and if approved would be in effect until amended or repealed.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any public comment on this item?
Matt Olson. Who my wife is. Hadn't really planned on talking, I was hoping there'd be quite a few more people here. You know, we, it's like deja vu all over again. Seems to me like a year ago, we were kind of doing this and you guys did all this, I'll keep my language, kind of crazy mask stuff to, you know, with no scientific proof, no nothing. And we're back here again. And people are wearing masks. You know, last time I was here, you know, we did the whole micrometers of water vapor and the, and the thing and the mask most of you are wearing and it's, your masks don't do any good. And now I'm just going to say, you guys are just, I won't say that. I can't believe you're wearing masks again. This is crazy. Just when you get some experts up here and you said that the, the Delta variant is more contagious, how much more dangerous is it? I'm not going to tell you, I know. How much more dangerous? Interesting. Okay? There's something that viruses do when they mutate, almost always. They get more contagious than something else. You guys can look that up, I'm not going to tell you. I just can't believe I have to come up here and talk to you guys. This is craziness. I, I haven't worn a mask since, you know, the school board, who knows what they're going to do. I apologize, I'm not more organized, but I just, I can't believe I have to come up here and say, hey, this is craziness. We did this a year ago. It was crazy last year. And it's more crazy now that we know more about the virus. And you guys are still doing it. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. I just, again, just blows my mind that I have to come up and talk.
Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. This resolution is unnecessary and flawed. There is no longer a COVID emergency in South Dakota. The governor rescinded the emergency order on June 30th. Therefore, you have no standing to pass an emergency resolution or ordinance. Over the past two years, you have been provided many examples by myself and others that masks don't stop the virus. Even the wording of your resolution admits the vaccine doesn't stop the spread of the virus. Once again, hospitals are not being overwhelmed. In fact, by your own expert's example in the latest video, COVID video you put out, the highest groups of hospitalization in South Dakota were in the 40, an older age group. Strangely, that is the age group with the highest rate of vaccinations. Out of the 58 hospitalized last week, 47 were in that, those age groups. There is no data proving children need to wear masks. Again, this has been provided to you multiple times and you want to recommend two-year-olds wear them? That's unrealistic. Where do you get the two-year-old number? What proof do you have that a two-year-old is going to benefit from wearing a mask? You don't. It's an arbitrary number, you pulled out of thin air. The resolution doesn't have a definitive timeframe. All your other ordinance and resolutions were 60 days or until repealed. Just like the ordinance you tried to slip through earlier this year that stated this ordinance will continue until immunity is achieved. That's impossible. Immunity will never be achieved. For that reason alone, this makes it a flawed resolution and unpassable. Vaccine has been available for months now. All the people who wanted to get it have gotten it. Vaccinated people are shedding the virus and infecting others. People have traveled to COVID hotspots and then came back here and didn't get tested to see if they caught it because they had the shot and they thought that they were protected. And then they went out in the community and potentially spread it among others. This is why you've seen the cases increasing from July on till now. People are responsible for their own health. There is no need to pass a resolution just so you can pat yourself on the back and say you, we are doing something. Vote no on 2172. And as far as you guys wearing masks, this is all just theater. You guys have had a meeting last week, nobody was wearing masks. What happened? Did a big cloud of COVID come down and infect everybody? It's all theater. There's no reason for this resolution.
Any other public comment?
Good evening and I'm here again, either talking in this or going around the mountain, but I want to just thank you for reconsidering this. There is a lot of science to this, the virus keeps changing, that's why we have to change. And my biggest concern is for the children because they cannot always make those decisions for themselves. And I think that's why I'm here today. I'm vaccinated, I feel well protected, but we need to protect our children. And so I thank you for reconsidering resolution 072. Thanks.
I'm on the way out to Chamberlain and got a call from a friend and said that this resolution was going to be discussed at tonight's meeting. Made a quick turnaround after visiting a couple of hours with my mom, 91 years old. I hope I brought enough of her wisdom back that I can share it with you. Someone who's been on this planet for nine decades and lived through a year in assisted living through lockdowns, the window visit with both of us crying. She had the BAM-BAM treatment after she had two positive tests but no symptoms. And I'm here to tell you that she knows as well as I do that this entire pandemic was a sham. Where are these case counts coming from? You're telling us, I heard, I heard on the radio on the way back, positive case numbers are up. Positive case numbers as still measured by the faulty PCR which is debunked, which is ending at the end of December when the new debunked testing will come out. This is all ridiculous. Two-year-olds are going to be masked. Let's look at the numbers. South Dakota Department of Health, tell me how many children have died over the entire course of the pandemic? Zero through nine-year-olds, 10 through 19? Anyone want to toss out a number? Make it easier. It's less than one. Zero children 19 and under have died from COVID. Given the fact that we count deaths among COVID as someone that had a positive test sometime 21 days before they died in the car crash, got a load of bricks dropped on their head, died from a heart attack, but if they had COVID positive tests within 21 days, that is a COVID death. Someone tell me where any of this makes sense. The masks are theater. I'll bet 10 minutes before you walked in here, y'all were pulling them out of your pockets and slipping them on before you came up here and sat down. The masks started showing up at Walmart. People that have been vaccinated or not vaccinated now have to wear masks if they work at Walmart because the day before they didn't, but the next day they had to because someone said they had to. People need to start thinking for themselves, turn off the television, do their own research, talk to some people that have done the research if they don't want to take the time to do it themselves. If you're going to mandate anything, you show us the evidence. You work for us. Where's the data? Where's the evidence? Knock off the CDC recommendations because I know where those come from too and how those are derived. I know the money trails. I know a lot about this pandemic and maybe a few more could spend a little more time doing that research if you haven't already. So show me the data, show me the evidence, show me your common sense, show me your human decency. If you start throwing masks on kids that are two years and above, you think I'm mad now? I haven't even started. There is no science. The science is this some kind of moving target. Fauci decides if we should wear zero masks, one mask, three masks and stand on your head and turn blue, by the way, that might help too. So where's the data? Where's the evidence? You show it to me and then we'll talk about this resolution. I'll be writing.
Want to take some time? Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm, I'm of Brookings County and you should all vote no today on this recommendation. I'm not going to stand here and tell you about the facts of COVID, point out the faulty tests that don't know the difference between influenza or COVID or this Delta variant. I'm not going to talk about the skewed data on the death rates that list COVID if you're, just list COVID when you die of a heart attack. And the vaccines and how dangerous that is to people. Have you gone on and read real stories about what the vaccine is doing to people? They call it the clot shot. And that is what you're recommending to the citizens of Brookings. It is dangerous. It is experimental. And I don't know about you, but I learned in dare in grade school that I am not supposed to take experimental drugs. And you guys should not be pressuring your people to take experimental drugs. I do feel like your minds are already made up and I hope you have done your research because that is your job when you're taking civil liberties away from your people. It is your job to do the research. You guys are not healthcare workers. It is not your job to make recommendations to your people, to the people, to wash their hands and cover their mouths when they sneeze. They don't need that from you. You guys have a city, city to run. You have more important things to focus your time on. We are the adults. We can make our decisions. And more importantly, I am the mother. I know what is best for my child. You do not get to tell me how to parent my child and what to put on their face. Do you know what's cleaner at the end of the day? Your underwear or your face mask? Yeah. It's not your face mask. A large majority of the Brookings people do not agree with masks. You are our representatives. We put you here and you need to listen to us. We don't want this and you're going to find that out. This recommendation is a slippery slope to mask mandates. Another vote by the city council to mandate masks is going to cause a huge conflict in our community. Masks and vaccines divide the community more than they are. Masks and vaccines divide the community more than they already are. They call it divide and conquer for a reason. It's them versus us. It's not fair. I really hope that you will listen to us and you will protect our constitution rights and say no to this recommendation. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, a closed public comment. Is there any council members would like to make any comments or?
Yes, I will. Resolution was even necessary. People are going to just continue to do what they're going to do. I don't think this helps out anything. And the unvaccinated, what happens if they don't want to get vaccinated? How long do we keep this? I know where this is heading, and I know it's heading to mandates. I have no doubt about that. The numbers are going to get higher. We received a lot of emails about SDSU and the Brookings School District. We don't have anything to say with SDSU. They kind of do their own thing, and they're not doing masks, and the high schools aren't doing masks. Am I correct on that? Correct, I believe that that's what it is. I do realize that at a high level, people are getting sick. However, those folks decided not to get the vaccination. And what I'm hearing is those that get sick from the COVID wished that they would have got the vaccination. I'm just going to vote like I did last year and do exactly what I did. It's up to the individual. Children, you know, between two and twelve, they're not going to make the decision themselves. The decision is up to their parents. Parents have to make that decision, and I'm a strong believer in that we have rights. And I'm not one for, like I said, I realize this is recommendations, but it just doesn't look right to me. I just, I will vote no. Thank you.
Councilmember Brink.
I'm going to echo my fellow councilmember Collins on this one. As I thought about this tonight, I thought, you know, I've advocated for personal responsibility and taking accountability for your actions in terms of having good practices of hygiene, staying away from other people to the extent that that's feasible. Getting the vaccine if you want to get the vaccine, and that's an option for you. And I'm still in favor of those behaviors. But I also suspect that this will go some other direction. And while the intention tonight is purely symbolic, now I will say I'm not one for, for government to pass rules that don't have any kind of policy impact, but we do it all the time. We have symbolic gestures all the time in terms of proclamations and things like that. So there's a precedent for that. And this is a symbolic gesture that we, that we can make and say to people, "We encourage you to do these behaviors." The problem that I have with it, though, is that in no way does this seem to get at the cause or the, for lack of a better word, vaccine hesitancy that might exist within some communities. In no way does this persuade anyone who, who is already set against getting the vaccine to get it. I don't think that we're, we're doing anything to move the needle there. So simply passing more mandates and saying more loudly that we have these rules that we want you to follow, that's not going to change anyone's mind. And I want people to keep that in mind. Do you want this to be effective or do you want to get your way? If you want it to be effective, we need to figure out ways to communicate about this pandemic that will be acceptable and that will be things that people can, can believe in. And unfortunately, there's so much trust lost in our national environment that it's really hard for anyone to know who to believe, who to trust, who to listen to. And I'm going to say again, I'm, I'm not a doctor, and I don't think that I have special knowledge about COVID that you don't have, and I don't think that my recommendation is more important to you as an individual than what your doctor might tell you. So I will vote no tonight as well.
I am in support of Resolution twenty-one dash zero seven-two, in part because I think it's important that when there's significant activity in our community, that we acknowledge it with the items that we're discussing on our agenda. I've served on the council long enough to know that when we put an item on our agenda for consideration, it increases the awareness level among the community. It either starts or continues a community conversation. I happen to think what's happening with the uptick in COVID cases in our community is alarming enough that we should be recognizing it publicly and having a conversation about the ways that we can mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen and the Delta variant. I too am not a healthcare provider, but we have access to countless healthcare providers in our community and our state and across the country. This resolution aligns with recommendations for the centers, from the Centers for Disease Control. I understand that faith has been shaken in the CDC. It also aligns with recommendations from the South Dakota State Department of Health. It aligns with recommendations that we've received from the Brookings Health System, from the Sanford Clinic and the Avera Clinic, all local healthcare providers that most of us have trusted for, for decades to care for our loved ones and our, our fellow community members. Again, these are recommendations, they're not mandates. I also do want to make it clear that as elected officials in the city of Brookings, one thing that I took very seriously over the last eighteen months was the importance of being good partners and linking arms with South Dakota State University and the Brookings School District. I think it's important that we make a statement as the city, depending upon where this fall semester goes, that we are ready to be good partners with the Brookings School District and South Dakota State University. I think it's in the best interest of our community to ensure that our schools continue in-person instruction for as many days this fall as possible. So if encouraging masking ensures that more students are in our schools and at our, on our campus, learning and living and working in Brookings, then I'm happy to recommend those behaviors. We're in a county right now where forty-seven percent of the adult population is vaccinated. That's alarming to me considering that those that are twelve and under are not eligible to receive the vaccines. They don't have a choice. I do feel fortunate that I have a thirteen-year-old daughter, so she'll go to school tomorrow fully vaccinated. But I feel for families that either have children in different age groups or all of their children are under the age of twelve. I think it's important that as a community, we stand together and say, "If you're looking for a list of recommended behaviors in Brookings that could help us get through this fall, knowing as much as we can possibly know right now about a virus that is ever-changing, then we should mask when we're indoors and we can't be socially distanced, and we should get the vaccine if you're eligible and able." So I'm going to vote in support of Resolution twenty-one dash oh seven-two.
Councilmember Tiltonburn.
I would echo the sentiments of my fellow councilmember. I know that last week, our council sat here and heard presentations from local state experts, and they gave us guidance. And I know that as we battled the surge last year, we took their guidance very seriously, and it helped guide the decision-making process that we went through. And I will continue to listen to their guidance and work with those experts in the field to have them help me decide maybe what a good direction is for our community. They're one voice in this puzzle. And as Councilman Wendell mentioned, collaboration has been incredibly important over the last year and a half. Collaboration with local experts and also the entities that he had mentioned being SDSU and our K-through-twelve school district, as well as our hospital, our doctors and our medical community. I want to make sure that our local healthcare professionals can continue to serve our community in a way that is effective and not overwhelmed, and I hope that this, that this recommendation will assist them in that. I also am a parent of children that are under the age of twelve and who are not eligible for the vaccine. And I can tell you that I am worried about the well-being of my children. And I think that if there is even one thing that we can do to help those under twelve, those that are vulnerable to be protected, these recommendations would be those things. And if that means that the leadership of this community can come forward and say, "We support these recommendations that come from experts," I, I think that it is part of our responsibility to do so, and so I will be voting in favor of this tonight.
Councilmember Avery.
Well, I so wanted this to be over with, you know, like everybody else, you know. I had the opportunity to have COVID, and it wasn't a pleasant experience. Had the vaccine, you know, did the masking when that was what we were supposed to do. And I, I share the frustration. I just, I'm mad because we have to do this again, but I'm not sure that any of us up here can stop that. I mean, if we could just do it, we would just say, "COVID, go away." And it, and if we could do that, we'd all do it. I've gotten, I haven't been on the council very long, so I've, I was kind of surprised by how many people that reached out to me on this issue. Some issues that I thought were important, people didn't apparently think so, but this one, I, my little iPad was lighting up today, and, and to be honest, most of the people were encouraging me to do something. They wanted the council to, they said the other entities, they're, they're not sure what they're going to do, but the council has to do something. They have to get this fixed. I don't know if we can or not, but I think, I think the discussion is right that, I think it's incumbent on us to, to at least make a recommendation that we're serious about this, we're watching it, we're going to encourage the, what needs to be done, we'll try to do it. And we're trying to listen to everybody's opinion, but in the end, you know, it's, it's a tough deal, and we sure don't want to go backwards. We, you know, we want to do the right thing. We want to encourage people to do what's best for them. So I'm going to vote in support of it. I don't like it, but I think it's the responsible thing to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Bacon, do you have any comments or questions?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yes, I, I just want to share that I've had the opportunity this summer to travel to a number of states with my family, and it's been amazing, the number of states and communities who have mandated the masks and the individuals who are wearing them without question, without complaint, like I think the rest of the council members. I don't want to mandate it again, and that's why we brought it forth as a recommendation. But I do think it is responsible for us to publicly make that recommendation, encouraging others so that we can keep the numbers as low as we possibly can and hopefully someday soon wipe COVID from the face of the earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Any other comments, questions? I guess I, I guess I look at this as a heads up. We're going down the wrong path again, as far as I'm concerned. Our numbers are up. South Dakota made the news today, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven percent increase in the last week. That's not good. I just think that, that we, I don't want to go down the path we did last year. I really don't. I don't want to have to make people do something that they don't want to do. And, and this is basically just a heads up, say, "Look, you know, we've got an opportunity to slow this thing down, stop it. We know what we can do in the last year. The community came together pretty well last year, and we got through it. Let's just try and do this again." And like I said, this is basically a recommendation. It's, it's a warning shot out there so that we don't get ourselves in any more trouble than we already in. So with that being said, please, clerk, please call the roll.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
No.
Collins.
No.
Motion passes. Move on to item A. Eight. Sure. Move to the mic, please, ma'am.
I have one request before we go down this path that we all seem to be going down right now. A one-sided narrative. The CDC says, Dr. Fauci says, all of the health experts in our community say, SDSU, Bonnie Specker, all of these people say. Let's hear some other voices. There are health professionals, and I could name three of them that are personal friends of mine. I would like to have a panel discussion and have equal time for voices on both sides of this issue. It is not a one-sided, cut and dried, this is the science and this is how it is. Viruses have been around longer than we have, a lot longer than humans. The, the comment that we're going to just poof, this is all going to go away because we're wearing masks again, and we're marching around like good little soldiers doing exactly as we're told. No, that is not how it works. People should not just be blindly following instructions and orders and mandates. So let's get a panel discussion together. Do you want me to organize one? Would you hold one here? Who wants to provide a facility and a time, and I'll organize it. You bring in your three experts, I'll bring in my three experts. Let's talk science.
Take it under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight-A, introduction and first reading on Ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three-zero, an ordinance pertaining to an application for conditional use permit to establish the mixed business slash residential use in a B-three heavy district on Lot One, Block Two, Folsom Edition, also known as five-thirty-first Street South. Lots two and three, Block Two on Folsom Edition, also known as one-ten Sixth Avenue South. Mike Strucker, Community Development Director, will, will explain this item to, to us a little more.
Public watching at home and in attendance. Ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three is for conditional use to establish a mixed use on the property just new. The applicants are proposing on the lower level contractor shops or storage units, and then up above, some apartment units. So there's seven contractor shops on the main floor with four two-bedroom apartments above it. This does come to you with a four-to-two recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. The development review team and staff have both offered their support for not approving it. We felt that the mixture of uses is not something that you typically see in a mixed-use development. The intensity level of those types of uses are not compatible. The B-three zoning district is very, very comparable to the I-one zoning district. In the I-one, we do not allow any sort of residential uses in that light industrial district, and a lot of these uses are very, very similar. The B-three is our heavy business district. We do have quite a bit of it zoned in the community along Main Avenue, but it's intensive uses also where we typically would see mechanic shops. We have the implement dealerships up on the bypass, and so it does come to you with a four-to-two recommendation from the Planning Commission, and we'd stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? See, none. Is there any questions from the council or, or? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I think you noted that the approval of this permit. What were some of the items that, that made you bring that recommendation forward?
Just the mixture of uses. Honestly, it's not something that we have typically seen in, in Brookings. When you look at contractor shops, storage units, you really have no control over what is, is contained within those types of facilities, and then to incorporate residential units up above, oftentimes in these types of situations, they're not the same users. So the, the individual living upstairs directly above these has, may not have any knowledge of what's going on below their living units, and that's our biggest concern is just the incompatibility of the potential uses.
So some of it is the activity that would occur, but some of it could be the materials that are stored below?
Correct. Could be both.
Councilmember Brink.
Related to that question, I was hoping you could let us know if there are any precedents anywhere in the community where there is a use like the one that's being proposed here, where there's residential mixed with something like that.
Oftentimes on a mixed-use project, it's, you see a lot downtown and some of the newer developments along Sixth Street, but they're more retail and service-oriented type businesses. You know, you think of a lot of the ones downtown, you know, retail where you're selling goods and services. You do have the restaurants and bars downtown, but those are also, they get periodic in they get periodic inspections through the Health Department and things like that. Storage units, contractor shops, once they're constructed, they're not inspected. Um, and the applicants can put covenants, but it's up to the applicants to enforce those covenants. It's not, um, uh, city responsibility to enforce covenants on individual properties. And so that's really the concerns and, um, you know, I can't speak on behalf of, you know, every, uh, contractor shop in, in the community. I've seen a few of them and, um, you know, it's, it's just my personal experiences. I wouldn't feel comfortable living above some of them, not because they have large quantities, um, of, of hazardous materials, but it's, you do a job, you bring a little bit back with you each time and over, over time, you accumulate quite a bit. And it certainly presents a opportunity for a very difficult situation.
Any other questions? All right, uh, second reading will be on September 14th. Move on to item 8B, introduction and first reading on ordinance 21 dash 029, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation number four to the 2021 budget. Um, Eric Gringle, our Chief Financial Officer, will review this item for us.
Is requesting approval of the supplemental appropriation number four to the 2021 budget. This supplemental, supplement information, uh, consists of nine parts. The first one, um, as is the, um, is the transfer of 1.4 million dollars funds from the City Council Priority Funding to the Capital Improvements Fund for facility repairs identified in the McKinstry Study performed in 2019. The detail of these repairs can also be found attached in the agenda documents. It is important to note that these repairs also contain, um, amounts listed for the Police Department Building, which will serve as contingency funding in case anything is needed before the remodel or the new construction begins. This request is not incremental to the 2021 budget as it was already listed in the original certified budget. Item number two is requesting 11,863 dollars to transfer from the General Fund Reserve to close the Marketplace Capital Project Fund. This request is not incremental and is considered a bookkeeping item just to be able to close out this fund. Part number three is requesting 3 million to transfer from three, three different funds. The General Fund Economic Development Reserve for 300,000, the Special Assessment Fund for 1.9 million, and the Storm Drainage, Storm Drainage Fund for 735,000 dollars to fund the 15th and 7 Capital Project Fund or TIV 10 for engineering and construction expenditures. 50% of these funds are planned to be partially paid back, well, with TIF proceeds to respective funding funds. This request is not incremental to a 2021 budget as it was considered in, in the Storm Drainage and the Special Assessment Funds. Request number fun- four is requesting 522,200 dollars to transfer from the City Council Priority Project Funding to the Project Management and Design and Engineering for the Public Safety Center. This is just to start the project and any other future agreements will come forward to council before commencement. This request is incremental to the 2021 budget. The fifth part is requesting 41,000 dollars from, to allocate from the Capital Syncing Fund to address deficiencies in the city's tool supply for flip maintenance. This request is not incremental to the budget as it's just redistribution of the funds. Request number six is requesting 975,000 dollars to utilize from the landfill reserves to fund a new compactor to mitigate further expenses repairing, uh, failures of the current equipment. This item, uh, was considered originally in the 2022, uh, capital plan, but we had to move it to this year given, um, all the repairs, uh, the, the, and the material repairs that has, have been needed this year so far. Due to this, this request is incremental to the 2021 budget, but will not be in the 2022 budget if approved. Uh, item number seven is the housing study. We're requesting 35,000 dollars from the City Council Priority Project Funding to the Brookings Economic Development to fund, uh, the county's housing study. These requests would be incremental to the 2021 budget. Item number eight, um, is requesting to assign 40,000 dollars from expected 2021 revenue surplus to fund the 10-year financial management plan initiative. These requests would be incremental to the 2021 budget. And lastly, uh, item number nine is requesting 17,500 to allocate from the Capital Syncing Fund to perform urgent roof repairs to the Armory City Building. This request will not be incremental as it is moving funds from one fund to, to the Armory Project. That said, um, I'll stand by for questions in any of these parts.
Councilmember Bacon, do you have any questions for?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eric. We're good. Yep. Introduction and first reading ordinance 21 dash 030, an ordinance certifying the 2022 City of Brookings Property Tax Levy to the Brookings County Finance Officer. Eric Gringle, our Chief Financial Officer, will review this item.
Good evening. This request is, this ordinance request 2022 3,659,001 dollars to the Brookings County Finance Officer per state statute. This amount was estimated in accordance to state law. And, and the slide, um, in front of us shows how we estimated it. We start with a certified amount on the previous year, which is 3.5 million dollars. Then we add a growth factor of 3.1618% attributed to new construction growth. And then we add 1.2% of a consumer price index factor to end up with, with our requested amount. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, are there any questions from the council? Okay, obviously not. Thanks, Eric. Uh, item 9A, public hearing in action on temporary alcohol application from Eponymous Brewing Company and Chade Winery to operate within the city of Brookings, South Dakota for the Disrupt HR Event to be held September 2, 2021 at Pioneer Park, 104 Sixth Street West. Bonnie Foster, City Clerk, will review this item.
Mayor, council members and members of the public, this is the first time that the Brookings Area Human Resources Association has applied for a temporary alcohol license for one of their disrupt HR events. They are looking and were looking for a event that would allow some social distancing. It's a unique location, and so they wanted to check out Pioneer Park and see if that would fit their venue. They're really excited to offer this for their members. They are a group of over 100 members in the Brookings and surrounding area. The alcohol will be provided by Eponymous Brewing and Chade Winery. All documents have been submitted that are required. The application was reviewed both by the City Clerk's Office and the City Attorney. There is a representative of the Barrow Group here this evening if you have any questions for them. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public would like to have comments or questions? Seeing none, close that. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 9B, public hearing in action on request for video lottery for MG Oil, DBA Corner Pantry Number 19, 921 20th Street South. Legal description, Lot 7B, Block 13, McClemmons Edition. Pending permit issuance and final inspection per the Community Development Department. Our City Clerk Bonnie Foster will review this item for us.
Mayor, council members and members of, members of the public, MG Oil has submitted a request for video lottery for the Corner Pantry location. This will allow them to have up to 10 video lottery machines at this location. If approved, this request will be placed on hold pending an occupancy permit issuance through the Community Development Department per any construction that needs to occur at the location. Uh, Troy Erickson is here this evening. If you have any questions for him, staff recommends approval.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make comment or have any questions? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion or questions? Councilmember Bacon, I'm just reminding myself that you're not here, but you're on the line. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thanks for asking. I'm all, I'm fine.
All right. Uh, I have no questions or discussions either. Um, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 9C, public hearing in action on Resolution 21 dash 067. A resolution amending the 2040 Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map. Mike Strucker, Community Development Director, will explain this item.
Thank you. Uh, Resolution 21 dash 067 is an amendment to our future land use map within our comprehensive plan. There's three proposals on the to Area A. Um, that property is currently owned, um, by a church and they have, uh, purchase agreement pending on that particular property. The applicant, um, is proposing, um, potential commercial uses there. In our comprehensive plan, it identifies that area as a civic use. And so without a change, um, you know, a support for a rezoning, um, classification in the future would not be supported based upon the existing civic designation within our comprehensive plan. Area B is an area along 20th Street South and it stretches along a portion of, uh, Arbor Hills and the Southland Edition. Um, it's a similar, um, request in that it's proposing to go to an urban medium intensity. Um, it's currently as a medium density residential, uh, use in our comprehensive plan. Uh, the applicant is also proposing, um, an opportunity for some commercial rezoning along 20th Street South. And, and you'll actually see the same thing with Area C. Uh, Area C is a little bit more of a cleanup, um, and kind of a little bit of an oversight during our comp plan process in that, uh, the existing frontage along 20th Street is already zoned commercial. However, there is an area, um, a little bit further north of, of the area that's on the west side of Christine Avenue that they would like to also see some, uh, commercial potential there as well. Um, in the Area C, it's a mixture of medium density residential as well as open wetland. Um, we discussed this, um, at the Planning Commission level, the Development Review Team and Staff. Um, we are supportive of the, uh, proposals for changes. Um, the open wetland area, uh, during the comp plan process, they were kind of looking at, uh, some of the wetlands that come through that area. It has been delineated. Um, and it's north of the proposed area. The site's been graded. Uh, the drainage plan's been complete and the pond expansion has already been completed. So with that, uh, it does come to you as a six to zero recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. And they're all proposing, uh, the urban medium intensities. I think we're starting to see some of the landowners along here, uh, gearing up for when the 20th Street interchange is completed and providing some, uh, more commercial opportunities in this area. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike. Open this for public hearing. See any anybody in the public, uh, have any comments or questions? Not seeing any, uh, close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any council question or discussion? Councilmember Tiltonburn.
Um, I think you already spoke a little bit to this, Mike, but, um, the question I had was around based on the explanation you just gave, some of that, um, some of the concern I had about possibly changing that designation has been addressed already through a, um, a plan and, and it sounds like perhaps a pond that's now established in the area. Is that right?
Yeah, there's actually a wetland, uh, immediately adjacent to the property that's been delineated to the north. North of there is a city detention pond that the developer has bought into and helped expand. Immediately to the west of it is another city-owned detention pond, um, that kind of is along, uh, Midary Avenue. We call it the Nelson Pond. Um, and then, uh, the lot has been, uh, elevated and graded as such. And so there's really, we don't have concerns from a development perspective on that particular lot.
There, there's no longer concerns of possible flooding issues or, or water issues in that area?
Uh, not, well, I mean, there's always concerns. You'd never know that quite the event that you could have, but we're comfortable with it. It's actually higher than some of the land further north that they're building residential, um, units on, so we're comfortable with it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, item 9D, it's tabled item. Do we have to make a motion to remove this table? Yes, we do. All right. Public, public hearing in action on ordinance 21 dash 025, an ordinance establishing zoning regulations for cannabis establishments. Entertain a motion to remove ordinance 21 zero two five from the table.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, Mike Strucker, Development Director, will review this item.
Mayor.
Sorry, just call the roll.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Neemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you. 21 dash 025 is the zoning, um, regulation por- portion of the cannabis establishments. Um, it defines the various zoning districts that, uh, the four types of cannabis uses would be allowed in the dispensaries. Um, we're looking at restricting those to the B1, B2, B3 and B4 districts. Um, with the testing and manufacturing and cultivation facilities, we're looking at those in the industrial districts. Um, one of the things that we have done is, uh, with the cultivation, uh, facilities, we've moved those to a permitted special use, uh, which is essentially, uh, if you meet these requirements that are typical of a permitted use, and then we have like one or two additional points that they need to meet, meet, um, you're allowed to do by right. And one of those is, um, we have the, uh, buffer distance of a thousand feet from a residentially zoned property. Uh, and that was something that we kind of discussed last week. A, a couple of things that have come up real recently that we would recommend, as recent as earlier today, is, uh, on the cultivation facilities, one of the additional items that we would put under the criteria for permitted special use is such uses shall be within a completely enclosed building. That is pretty similar to a lot of, uh, or some of the other uses that are allowed in the I1 district. For example, like a hazardous household material facility. It's appropriate in the I1 district, but everything needs to be contained within an enclosed structure. One of the concerns is, is in an industrial setting, typically large buildings, large land masses, the potential for, uh, outside growing operations could present themselves. And we just feel that, uh, it's probably best for those types of facilities if everything is, is enclosed underneath one roof. Uh, and then it also helps with the security. So that would be an additional recommendation that we would make. Um, the other thing that we added earlier today, we had a, a good meeting with, uh, Brookings County. And we kind of struggled a little bit. We've got this area called the Joint Jurisdiction Area. And we had a lot of questions about, you know, what do we do with that particular area? And so we felt that it would be appropriate that within our ordinance, that we would just put, uh, a clause in there and it's section two, I guess in the revised ordinance we prepared today, that would prohibit, uh, cannabis establishments within the joint jurisdiction area. There's some questions, um, and concerns about, the city has zoning, uh, jurisdiction on anything that's in the joint jurisdiction area that's not zoned egg. But would we have the ability to issue a license outside of our municipal, uh, corporate boundaries? And then on the flip side is, is do we really want to put our counterparts in the county and, and a position where we're approving the zoning and, and kind of forcing their hand in whether or not to issue a license? They are allowing licenses, uh, elsewhere in the county. We account for it within city limits. We felt the joint jurisdiction area is an area that is in its, uh, area of transition and it's best that we don't allow them in that that we don't allow them in that particular area and that if somebody is interested in it, they can certainly come to us for annexation. And then it would be covered under our city ordinance. With that, uh I would just give, stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike. Open the, the for public hearing. Seeing no one, um, interrogation, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Is there any council or discussion on this? Councilmember Wendell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the cultivation? Cultivation facilities? Can I proceed? Okay, uh, you had referenced that staff had decided they'd be most comfortable with those facilities being completely contained, that there wouldn't be outside or outdoor growing. Well, how did we come to that conclusion? Or what would be the risk of the outdoor growing?
I think there's a couple of things, um, smell is one of those things. Mentioned the smells that could be associated with those things. There's also security concerns, um. I, I think if there's a will, there's a way, but at the same time is how do you secure a three or four acre site? Um, you know, exterior site, and so, I mean, you can certainly do fencing and other means, but it's a little different than having it within uh a building under locks and and various um separations within the building so you can have better control over access. And I think that gets into a little bit of the, of the next items on the agenda where city attorney Steve Breitzman can speak to about some of the security measures that would be necessary. We just felt that uh open aired growing operation poses a few more concerns um for the community.
I kind of just wanted to understand the line of thinking there, I don't have strong opinions. Over time, I'd be interested to see kind of how open air facilities are managed and as the market uh or the industry matures here, if there's a pathway to that, I'd like to learn how we do it best, but I'm happy to take staff guidance on this one.
I was wondering if we could look at the, the map again with the layers and the thousand feet, the three hundred feet, and maybe even the joint jurisdiction zone, just so the public understands what
So on the overhead right now is uh our zoning map that would allow for dispensaries. The yellow outlines is the thousand foot buffer from um the schools, public or private that are established um prior to a, to an application for cannabis establishment. Um, we don't have the joint jurisdiction zoning map up here, but I can tell you there are some um of the business B zone property, commercial property on South Main outside city limits, uh kind of in this area, I think this is roughly about thirty-sixth street. Um, for reference point, city limit stops right here at thirty-second. Um, you have River Ridge, the Bridle Estates, University Estates in these residential neighborhoods. So there is some commercial zone property in here as well as uh there's a few places, um, drawing a blank on the, the mobile home park down there on Main Avenue South, but the frontage along Main is commercially zoned as well as the woodworking shop further south. To the north, we have a few locations, um, northwest of the community. Um, fireworks stand, there used to be a gas station up in this area. Um, but those are primarily the areas that are zoned commercial or industrial where uh cannabis establishment could be, could be located.
Within the joint jurisdiction?
Within the joint jurisdiction area. Within city limits, um, the brown here is our I one, uh, the orangish color is our B three. Green areas are B two. Um, the yellow is a B one. And I believe, to be honest, I'm not even sure what the
Can we put the three hundred foot buffer back on there too?
This is just from schools, so the buffer is just simply from schools, so all of the buffers are based off of the school locations.
But I thought tonight's ordinance also had a provision for religious institutions, preschools and detention facilities?
Yes, that does, yep, that is the buffer, my apologies.
There's also a buffer in there from residential to industrial, uh to ensure that we don't have cultivation in that center part of the community as well.
If you'd like a particular area you'd want me to zoom in on again?
You know, again, it's, it's a, it's a hard question, I was hoping to get more clarity on, you know, if we approach it this way and we pass this ordinance tonight with these stipulations, you know, what does that actually, what does that picture look like then for, for potential facilities that even could exist, right? Um, once we apply those rules and we separate the distances and things, so. Um, and it's hard to know, so.
I, I would just uh make a comment that right now, and in last week I brought up if council ever wanted to regulate quantity, now would be the time to do so in the zoning. The number I threw out last week is fifteen hundred to two thousand feet for dispensaries only uh would limit about four or five in the community. And so now would be the time to do that, and we can surely show you what that looks like, and I didn't know if that's where you're heading, council member.
No, I was just more curious if we, if we ended up passing nine D, um, what that would, what that would leave us with.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, I uh, I'm seeing that we don't have a consensus on a number of establishments. Some of us want a wide open, some of us want limited amount. Um, I've kind of considered this distancing thing for the dispensaries and uh I would be willing to uh amend the ordinance by making a motion to uh uh, look at fifteen hundred feet distance between dispensaries uh throughout the city of Brookings. And second? It's been moved and seconded on this amendment, is there any discussion or questions on that?
Yes, I, I would like to understand what would
Or, yeah. I'll start first. Seeing none?
Can you clarify what that means? These stipulations that we're already putting in here, then we'd have an additional recommendation where we'd be saying?
Basically, just so we don't have them right next to each other. You have an opportunity for the whole community to have access?
But they can't really be spread out. Have proposed.
Councilmember Wendell?
I recall when we initially had um a buffer zone between dispensaries. Um, we had kind of done the math on if, I can't remember if fifteen hundred was the number of feet, we'd kind of done the math on how many that would shake out to in Brookings, can you remind me, if, if that were included, what numbers we would be looking at?
Uh, just playing with the map, uh easily you could get four, potentially five dispensaries. Um, one located pretty much in every corner of the city, maybe a little bit further on some of those longer uh districts. Mike can kind of show you an example, uh if you had one located here, uh for example, on Main and eighteen hundred feet from there. You can see, you could end up with, with more than five, but it just depends on where the proximity uh locate with each other.
I think maybe for those that are following on, following along at home or have followed what other communities have done, uh, some communities have used an ordinance like this to attach a specific number to control the number of dispensaries in their community. Um, but we've heard from staff and I would tend to agree that attaching a specific number is going to be quite a burden for staff to manage over time. I think it's going to be challenging for us to meet an unknown demand in terms of entrepreneurs coming into the market. I was opposed to the regulation of the number of dispensaries over time. Um, I think the only way I could be compelled to controlling the number would be through zoning. Uh, and that's what this ordinance would do, attaching a buffer zone between the number of dispensaries. This is not us attaching a number, but essentially it's putting a ceiling on the number of dispensaries that can exist, given the buffers and if we require a certain amount of distance between them. I just wanted to make sure folks that are trying to track all of, all of this, understand what this would accomplish and what this amendment ultimately would, would do.
Councilmember Tilton Byrne?
It's my understanding that our previous um language, uh, when we there was only a thousand feet, um, so I'm wondering um what the consideration of fifteen hundred feet is this time versus the thousand feet that we had considered last time?
It was actually, I think, three hundred feet between
Oh, it's three hundred downtown and a thousand outside of it.
Is that what it was? We've had so many re- reiterations, it's hard for me to keep it straight.
The language is available in the marked version in our packet.
Okay, so i- i- it was just us playing with the measurement tool to determine, you know, quantity within proximity to the various corridors of the community. We felt fifteen hundred to two thousand feet would be appropriate to achieve uh could, um, maybe some consensus amongst council, because we heard there was some that wanted one, some that wanted five or more, and then some that didn't really want numbers at all, and to try to get somewhere in the middle, we just um playing with the the measurement tool, we assumed that uh with fifteen hundred to potentially two thousand, you can get close to that four to five numbers, just depending on where they're all located throughout the community.
Um, I personally, um, I was in favor of the previous amendment to remove that language, um, and I remain um in favor of keeping that language out of the ordinance. Um, I think we already have a pretty um significant uh number of places where these establishments are not going to be allowed. Um, and my, my thought on the matter is, we don't, we don't limit any other type of business in our community in this way. Um, this would be unique to um this type of business. Um, and um additionally, I think some of the concern is that um we may end up with an onslaught of um several of these facilities, and uh I think that this type of business is going to be heavily regulated um at the state level. Um, we have other parameters um in place locally, um, and I'm not convinced that we will be in a situation where we are overburdened. Um, and if we are in a situation where we have multiple facilities, I do think this may be um a circumstance where the market would sort itself out. Um, and so I personally um would prefer that we not include this additional buffer. Um, however, I, I will say that um I would prefer to limit, if we move in that direction, I would prefer to limit through zoning such as this versus um an arbitrary number. Um, but that being said, I, I probably will not support um this amendment.
Councilmember Collins?
Um, I would be in support of this, I like this, and the great thing about this is if we wait, you know, six months, eight months, a year, we revisit it, then we can always change things. But I think if we take a look at the demand and how many we're going to get, I'm just not so I, I'm just um not sure I agree with you on that uh particular item, I don't think we're going to get an onslaught of this. Um, I think uh we just have to wait and see what happens, and we can always change it. I mean, we can figure something out, I would, I would start, you know, low like we're doing right now, and then move up if we see the demand for it, but if we go too far up, we can't come back down, is that, is that correct?
It could be done, but it becomes, you know, difficult if people have made investments um rules, you know, that they assumed were going to continue.
Thank you.
Remember Avery?
Well, previously I had been one of the and after um discussions and just thinking about it more, I'm, I'm more inclined to go along with the idea of, of the zoning issue and taking care of any reservations I had that way, rather than setting an arbitrary number. I'd be in support of this amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Bacon, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I think councilmember Tilton Byrne, our my point of view on things very well.
Okay. Well, do you have any other comments? Alright, um, I, I, I move for this amendment just because I, I just thought it was a different way to limit how many that we were going to have, this gives them an opportunity to go where they want, instead of trying to decide what the number was going to be. And we can always change this, I'd rather, uh, I'd rather we were able to, to uh add than to try and subtract, it's going to be difficult to do that. So with that being said, let's uh, would the city clerk read that amendment again, please, and then we'll vote?
The amendment was to create a fifteen hundred distance between dispensaries throughout the city of Brookings.
Okay, please call the roll.
Can we clarify first, are, are we voting on the?
We're voting on the amendment.
To be added to the existing ordinance, but not on the?
Right.
Okay.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
No.
Wendell?
No.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
No.
Brink?
No.
Amendment fails, so we're back to the original motion, is there any other comments or questions? Do we want to leave this wide open? Councilman Avery?
So the, the zoning order that we'll be voting on now has the thousand foot buffer in, is that what it is? Has no buffer?
It has a thousand foot buffer from residential to industrial to mitigate uh commercial in the heart of the community. But as far as uh buffering between dispensaries, it has nothing right now.
We also, we also have no number on how many disp- We're going to leave this all wide open. Careful what you wish for, I'm just saying. Councilmember Wendell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I wouldn't want to characterize number of restrictions built into our ordinances and at a state level, and these buffer zones demonstrate that there, there are lots of considerations about where these dispensaries can exist in our community. I had indicated that I would be open to such an amendment if we were deadlocked, if as a council we couldn't move forward on this ordinance without building in some type of bu- buffer zone, I could support that. Um, but it sounds like we don't, it sounds like we can move forward without a buffer zone or a number attached. Uh, and that's why I voted no on the amendment. I happen to think that not putting a ceiling on the number of dispensaries to start with, but having the restrictions that are thorough and laid out both in this ordinance and in what we anticipate receiving from the state in October, and these buffer zones, which really dictate which neighborhoods these dispensaries can exist in, satisfies the concerns I had about where they might be in our community. So I'll, I'll vote yes for the existing language in the ordinance for those reasons.
Mike, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood is you're not, you can't place a limit on the number of establish- through the licensing procedure. So if you wanted to establish numbers, that would be the appropriate area. Here, we're just looking at more location-based. So I don't know if that helps at all with your decision-making process.
Any other discussion, Councilman Bacon?
Would like you to repeat it for me before we vote.
Councilman Collins?
So, this one is basically, okay, it's on if we're doing it like that, how many dispensaries that we could possibly have? I would like to know that.
On the dispensary side, this, you could basically have it wherever you see the, the red. Um, basically wherever there's a commercially zoned property outside the blue buffer zones, any of those properties could have it, and there'd be, you know, every, not every, quite a few of the properties downtown could potentially be, um, there really is no restriction between dispensaries. There is no buffer distance requirement that you can only have one every so many feet. There is no buffer distance requirement that you can only have one every so many feet. Um, you just have to stay 300 feet away from the, the churches, um, detention facilities, and 1,000 feet from a public or private school.
Right.
Um, and we measure, when we do that, we measure from property line to property line. Um, it's not center of the property, it's just from property line to property line. That's probably the easiest and cleanest way to, to do that measure, measurement, and it's in a straight line.
I'm trying to wrap my head around your, your guys' thinking. But I just don't understand it. I just don't get why we were gonna go, 'cause if we do get a bunch of people that wanna do it, then this is gonna be all over the place. Every stra... Yeah, I mean, it really is. I don't understand why you folks don't wanna go lower and then go higher. I just don't get it. Because we can always, like the mayor said, we can always, it's easier to go higher. We need to. That's my thought on it. I'm obviously gonna vote no on this, but that's my thoughts on it.
Any other comments or... Yeah, come on up. We had public discussion, it was closed, but go on up. Actually, we didn't have public hearing on this part of it. We just had public...
Isn't the next ordinance about the amount of red, amount of licenses we're handing out anyway? So, isn't that gonna discuss how many we're gonna have?
Sir, can you please state your name and then be a little closer?
Ray Moser, Brookings resident.
And just to clarify, uh, if I can, the council had an option to either set a specific number of cannabis, um, manufacturing, cultivation, testing, dispensaries, which is that next item, they could set a specific number. Or they can set a distance between dispensaries through the zoning. Therefore, we don't have an application process and try to set criteria, uh, that the council would agree upon to select an individual. It would let the market determine based on whoever you can find a location. Ultimately, that would go to city, to the state. So there's two ways to, to regulate the quantity. But ultimately, at the end of the day, it's up to council what direction they would like to go.
Right, now, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I do have a question.
Councilmember Wendell?
So, I think there's one scenario where we pass this ordinance and it doesn't include restrictions. The next ordinance, uh, has language related to the number of dispensaries. There's a chance that that stays on the table if we don't want to attach a number. Is there any language around the definitions or anything in that ordinance that should be included elsewhere? If that were to stay on the table and we not consider it tonight, is there anything in number two that should be included in this one?
No, uh, number two is just, or the second ordinance that we're... Would be, uh, just setting the limit, so, uh, none of that language is necessary to take action on this one or the licensing ordinance.
Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Brink?
Now we're voting on the ordinance.
Yep, voting on the original ordinance.
Okay.
Aye.
Collins?
No.
Niemeyer?
No.
Hilton-Burne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
No.
Bacon?
Aye.
So...
Could I ask for clarification from City Attorney Steve Breisman on this? Um, because there's some recommended changes, will this come back for another reading, um, at the next available council meeting? Or is this...
This would be a final.
This is final.
As it was published, yeah.
Clarification on that.
Are not in the ordinance tonight.
That you're discussing, those are the ones that you had mentioned pre...
Are not in the ordinance tonight.
Well, it certainly can come back with, with those changes if that's desired by the council.
All right. Item 9E, tabled item, second reading in action on ordinance 21-027, an ordinance establishing the number of medical cannabis establishments in the city of Brookings, South Dakota. Entertain a motion to remove ordinance 21-027 from the table. Removing this item from the table dies, I guess. We're not gonna decide that.
Well, isn't it that it's just gonna be unlimited then, right? So we really don't need this one?
Well, explain to the public what just happened here, Steve.
Yep. So, uh, if there's no motion to remove it from the table, it's on the agenda, then it remains on the table, but can be brought back at any time, uh, if it's placed on a subsequent agenda. So if it's requested that this be considered at a future date, uh, it can always be brought back, placed on the agenda, and you can have a motion to remove it from the table again at some subsequent meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Niemeyer, um, I'm not sure if now is the appropriate time or perhaps at the end of the request that at a future meeting, we do have the ordinance that we had passed this evening come back with the recommendations that, um, Mike Struck had mentioned earlier this evening regarding the enclosure for the, um, growing operations, um, and the other recommendation he had mentioned.
Yeah, staff would definitely do that, will plan to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 9F, tabled item, action on ordinance 21-028, an ordinance of establishing procedures for the licensing of medical cannabis dispensaries in the city of Brookings, South Dakota. Um, entertain a motion to remove ordinance 21-028 from the table.
So moved.
Second.
The move in second, please call the roll.
Hilton-Burne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye. Will the city clerk, uh, will the city attorney please review this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this would be the licensing, uh, uh, ordinance for establishments, which would include all types of medical cannabis establishments, not just, um, dispensaries. And so I do wanna make that clear, that this, uh, we've modified the, uh, proposed, uh, licensing ordinance from the first reading to be more comprehensive, to include every possible type under state law, which would be the four types, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and dispensaries. And so they all can be licensed under this, uh, ordinance. I would say that, uh, it did not require too many changes to, uh, convert this to an establishment licensing ordinance. So, um, it's frankly, uh, very similar to the ordinance that, uh, you gave first reading to, um, concerning this ordinance. Those would be my comments.
Open public hearing. Any questions from the public at all? Please call, uh, will close the public hearing, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
The move in second, is there any council discussion or questions?
Mayor Niemeyer, um, would there be anything in the language of this ordinance that we bring the recommendations that were made tonight before us?
One of the modifications I did was to, um, uh, in... Distance requirement in this licensing ordinance between, uh, establishments and, uh, medical cannabis, or, or, and public schools, public and private schools, is that I made reference to any zoning ordinances would also govern licensed establishments. So, rather than having all of the specific, um, buffer zones set forth in the licensing ordinance, I just, uh, included language that it's, uh, uh, those are incorporated by reference.
So just to clarify, if, um, the recommendation was passed at a future meeting, then this would automatically default to that language?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brink?
I just had a point of clarification as well. The, the licensing fee is something that will come back to us at a later date, correct?
Correct. We've, we've drafted an initial draft of, uh, of a fee resolution. Will only require, uh, one reading, and it, it hasn't been, but it will be soon.
Thank you.
Any other council questions or comments? Councilmember Bacon?
No.
All right, uh... Little clerk, please call the roll.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Hilton-Burne?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, onto other business. Item 10A, action on resolution 21-069, a resolution for a naming rights request for the Larson Ice Center Red Rink. Our Park and Rec Director, Dusty, will review this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just want to tell on this, uh, this resolution will provide for the naming of the Red Rink at the Larson Ice Center, to be named First Bank and Trust Rink for a period of 10 years. Uh, this was part of the fundraising campaign, excuse me, uh, for the Ranger Hockey Performance Center that, uh, the Brookings Ice Skating Association, um, you know, is in the process of fundraising for. Uh, this is, you know, that, uh, performance center has been gone through approval, you know, with both staff and the park board. Uh, so this, you know, the, the naming is related to that project. Um, the OBISA has, has made this request and has brought it forward to the Park and Rec Advisory Board as well, and they have recommended approval. Is there any other questions?
I would just add to that, uh, the overall project, I believe, is about a million dollars. You have, uh, about $500,000, uh, commitment, uh, from a donor, and then this pledge is $10,000 a year for 10 years, correct?
That is correct. And it is limited, at this point, to 10 years. That is the platinum sponsor level, I believe.
Thank you, Dusty. Uh, entertain a mo...
So moved. Second.
The move in second, and is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Is there any council discussion or questions?
Go Rangers.
Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Hilton-Burne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10B, action on a revised preliminary plat for lots 25-27D in Block 3, lots 1 through 7B in Block 6, lots 1A to 3C in Block 7, all in Arbor Hill addition. Mike Strucker, Community Development Director, will explain this.
Uh, this is a revised preliminary plat in the Arbor Hill addition. Uh, it's three blocks. You can see the areas that are affected, they're outlined in red. Um, what they're proposing is, um, combination of, uh, fourplexes, threeplexes, twoplexes. Uh, essentially, they're going with that single-family zero-foot side yard attached, trying to gain additional density in the community. It's a net increase of a total of 14 lots. Uh, what they do when they do the single-family attached, they build the houses, and then once they get the foundations in place, they survey down that common wall line. That's where they can plat the lot lines, and then they can sell them individually to homeowners. Um, this does come to you with a 5 to 0 recommendation from the Planning Commission. Uh, it's consistent with the current zoning, which is R3 in apartment district in that particular area, and the Development Review Team and staff recommend approval as well, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Any other questions from, uh, well, yeah, the first thing we gotta do here is entertain a motion to, right?
Correct.
Right.
So moved.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Is there any public, is there any public comment on this?
Hi, I'm Joe Schulte, and if, uh, if... A little flyer here for you to look at.
So my name is Joe Schulte, and I live at 1,900 Grand Arbor Circle, which is right in the middle of, uh, this Arbor Hill development. Um, when you buy a lot, you're not really just buying a lot, you're really buying into a neighborhood. And when you're one of the, uh, early buyers into that development area or neighborhood, you're really not buying what's there, you're really buying what's being promoted. Um, now, this picture shows the, uh, marketing that they had, you know, it's the sign that sits out in front of the area, which is probably their primary marketing really for this. And, uh, you know, it shows single-family dwellings. Um, when we bought our lot, we knew that that area to the, uh, east of the water was zoned, that it could be multifamily dwellings, but it was already platted out as single-family dwellings. And so, you kinda have the assumption it's gonna stay the way it's platted and the way it's promoted, um, to the point where, if you look on the backside, they not only showed the lots, but they showed the square footage of each of them. Um, they're fairly good-sized lots, which good-sized lots tend to lead to good-sized houses, houses that are a little more expensive, that we're gonna tend to keep the, uh, the value of other homes that are in the area, uh, up as well. The, uh, lots on the west side of the water were some of the most expensive lots that they had in their development area. And I really don't think they would've been able to get the premium price that they asked for those lots, uh, mostly in the $70,000 price range, uh, had it been publicly been known that they were gonna replat this to multifamily dwellings. If you were to go to a store and buy a shirt, and as you're paying for the shirt, the clerk slips in a different shirt, and you get home and you discover it, you're gonna go back and you're gonna either ask for your money back, or you're gonna, you know, get, get what you paid for. Well, when you buy a lot and you've built a home on it, you can't get your money back. All you can try and do is get what you paid for. So we paid for a lot in the middle of single-family dwellings, not with multifamily dwellings. So, what I would like to recommend is that the lots immediately adjacent to the water, between the water and the road, remain as currently platted, and then perhaps those other lots further east could be modified. Thank you.
Were comments brought back to you at the Planning Commission?
I was at the Planning Commission, you know, gave objection to, to the changes.
Okay.
Um, James Drew was there, and he said he hadn't heard of any objections, uh, to the change previously, although I talked to all my neighbors and he hadn't spoken to any of us. So I'm not sure where he would've gotten objections, you know, having not spoken to it. He also commented that it was always known that this was gonna be higher-density housing, but yet, you know, that's not what they were promoting in that sign, obviously. Um, he did offer, and, and you see and hear that he's left out now the, uh, the lots, um, in, what is it, Block 3. However, his intention is to make those smaller single-family dwellings than what they currently are. And then, to the further south, uh... And then to the further south, uh, you know, maintain the multifamily dwelling, uh, change. My proposal or wish is, is to at least keep the, the east half, the piece between the water and the road, as it was promoted in the, uh, marketing material that was sold to us. We really don't have any other protection, other than this council or that type of thing.
Thank you. Anybody else public-
Good evening, my name is Joe- Five Grand Arbor, right next to Joe. I just wanna point out, I agree with everything he says, I share that point of view. Previously, I used to live on a road that had duplexes on that road, and it was a great neighborhood, but with my kids, age 3 and 6, they're starting to ride bikes, you know, run around the neighborhood. We thought it was time to move, um, into a neighborhood that didn't just have the top population density of our current living. So we looked around town, we saw the Grand Arbor Community sign out on the Drew Brothers' property there. We saw the size of the lots and thought, that's a great area, you know, it's north of the nature park. We love going to the nature park with our kids. So looking into it, seeing, you know, the the information shared with the public, the size of lots, we thought that was a great place. We bought our lots, we built our house, and like Joe said, as soon as all the lots and all the houses had been started and built, that's when we heard about the change in the proposal of the size of lots. You know, it's unfortunate, again, we invested, this is our forever home. We decided this is gonna be a great community, and, uh, not even a year into living there, not even a few months into there, our community's changed from something that we have no control over. So, I agree, I would love to see the area stay as plotted originally, you know, at minimum, you know, the east side of the water part to be that as well. You know, I went from having six backdoor neighbors to nine backdoor neighbors. You know, that area, instead of having 20 neighbors, now has 40 neighbors. Just the, just a lot, so... Just, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you. Justin, you got any comments?
Justin, the engineer for Clark Drew, uh, developer of this property. Um, I'd just like to point out, the property was zoned about four years ago, if I'm correct, Mike. 2017, I believe. It is zoned R2 and R3 already. So it's our understanding that this preliminary plat does meet the zoning requirements. So, I mean, I guess any other specific design or lot layouts would have, you know, questions would have to go to Mr. Drew, who's not present, but that's really all we can say at this point.
Uh, Justin, question for you, while you're still standing. Six lots right there, just basically just to the straight east of Joe and, and the other gentleman's house. Approximately, what size square footage house would you put there?
I'm looking at the width. I can't quite read that from here. I think it's 68. Just a guess, maybe a 1,200 square foot house, 1,300.
On the main level?
On the main level.
Okay.
That's just a guess at this point.
Alright. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, is there any comments or questions from council? Oh, never mind. Mike?
When I was buying that lot, I- Brookings Planning Site, and the zoning map that they have is over four years old. You know, so I did not know that it was zoned. Again, I probably could've asked someone on it, but it was not updated on the Brookings site. As of four years, I feel that's a little outdated. So the only information that I had at my disposal was the sign presented for that neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Struck, you have any other comments?
At, when it's approved, it's, it's not platted, it's not recorded in the registered deeds. It's, preliminary plats are kind of a guideline. Um, it doesn't become official until you record, uh, a plat, and it's surveyed, pins are placed at the corners of the property, you go through a process of filing with the registered deeds. Preliminary plats, they're subject to change, and I completely understand that the residents may have some frustration. R3 zoning allows for an apartment district. There's nothing that says he doesn't, can't go in there and put apartment buildings in there. You can build apartment buildings over this here, you could take the whole block and put apartment buildings with the zoning that's in place. Uh, he's proposing the single-family attached zero-foot side yard, which is essentially, everybody calls it a twin home, a triplex. Lots 1A, 1B, and 1C directly to the east of that on 22nd Avenue are just that, they're single-family attached, owner-occupied units. Those were fairly small units and sold for well over the asking price. What he's proposing is something very similar along Block 6, 7, and 3. Block 5, he, based upon the discussion at the Planning Commission, he withdrew that from this preliminary plat, and he'll be bringing it back to the Planning Commission in September. But that's what they're proposing, they're trying to solve a housing need in this community. We, as a city, are pushing density. There's no secret about it. We have to get denser in this community if we wanna continue to grow. Housing affordability is a struggle in this community. They're trying to meet a need of the community. They're trying to meet a need for our police officers, our schoolteachers, that can't afford a 3, 4, $500,000 house. And so that's what they're proposing to do, they've done some in other developments. In the Fox Run, they're selling very well, and I think you're gonna see more and more of this type of housing, because it is, it is something that the market is responding to, um, they're desiring, and, um, you know, I can't speak to their marketing efforts, that's not something the city gets involved in. But, you know, from the preliminary plating side of things, everything meets our requirements of our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance and this. So if you have any questions for me, I'd certainly be available.
Yeah, is there any council discussion or questions?
I have a, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had a question for Mike, I just wanted some clarity as I- I noted that Mr. Drew heard the concerns from the neighbors and said he was willing to reconsider a replating of the couple of the lots. Is that Block 5?
That is Block 5, and so he, he withdrew it from this preliminary plat because he wanted to keep moving it along, because one of the issues, he needed to get the right-of-way of Laserna Avenue established, because he would like to get that infrastructure in and get that out to 20th Street South. And so he, he wanted to make sure that that went forward, and he wanted to make sure that he had some, um, assurance of where the lots would potentially lay out, so he could stub services out, so he's not cutting into a brand-new street. But he is bringing Block 5 back, um, you know, I can't speak on, on behalf of, uh, you know, 100% of his intentions, but the original lots, I believe, were pretty good size, like in the 11, 12, 13,000 square foot size. Square footage is always required on a preliminary plat, because we need to check it against our zoning regulations to make sure they meet the minimum lot area frontage and things like that. So that's a requirement on all preliminary plats. But they, they are subject to change, and, uh, I would say, in, in my almost 12 years with the city, very rarely has a preliminary plat been approved and never been adjusted. It's usually revised at some point in time, because they adjust to the market conditions.
One of the reasons I asked for clarity on that is, if I'm understanding correctly, one of Mr. Schulte's requests was that potentially Block 3 also be treated like Block 5, right, where you would increase those lot sizes, or, or maybe more aligned with where, the way they were originally plotted. I just wanna understand what that conversation was.
That did not occur at the Planning Commission level.
Not at the Planning Commission, okay, okay. So when, okay, I'm, I just, I'm trying to track the conversation for a minute.
Most of the, um, neighbors in attendance at the Planning Commission lived north of Block, or, I'm sorry, west of Block 5, and so they were speaking more to those lots that would be directly behind them across the, the drainage way. I don't believe anybody from the cul-de-sac to the south, adjacent kind of the Block 3 was present at the Planning Commission meeting.
You know, I'll just acknowledge that I'm really struggling with this one, I'm hearing the feedback from the neighbors and absolutely empathize with it. I also understand, uh, our zoning, uh, and, and what a developer is trying to accomplish in that area, and I don't know how, as a council, we, uh, not approve what is recommended through the Planning Commission, as long as it aligns with the zoning that's been laid out there. So I, although I'm struggling with this, I wanted to make sure I really understood the conversation at the Planning Commission, as the recommendation came to us on a 5-0 vote.
Councilmember Brink?
I just wanted to know, uh, Mike, in your opinion, what would be some questions that prospective, property owners who are looking to build might ask, or might look for, to avoid getting into a situation like this? I mean, I recognize, we can't say that best choice should've done differently with their marketing or anything like that, but, but if you're, if you're gonna build a house in Brookings and you don't want this to happen to you, what are the things that you should look into?
Loaded question. I went through the similar experience when I built a house in Sioux Falls. Because I'm in the field, I knew what to look for. So the first thing I checked was the future land use map, their major street plan map. Those are the two things I checked for, uh, what are the future uses identified within that area? Are there major streets planned in that area? Um, because you're looking at traffic and the intensity of the type of uses. So first thing is, is, you know, contact the city, um, go on the website, find our comprehensive land use plan, read through that, um, you know, ask, you know, it might trigger some additional questions, what do you mean by this? What do you mean by that? The unfortunate part is during this timeframe, that's when we were updating our comp plan, and so we went, moved more from your traditional, we're going to have all of our commercial at, commercial nodes, and then we're gonna transition from commercial to high-density, to medium-density, to low-density, to more of an intensity-based, where it's like, there's options that you can have now in our future land use map, like an urban medium-intensity. It could be single-family houses all the way up to a commercial mixed-use project and everything in between. In our old comp plan, that wasn't the way it was, it was very, here's your commercial, and then you go to your higher-density residential and work your way to your lower-density as you move further away from that major intersection. So I would really look at major street plan to see what major streets are out there. What are the future land use intensities in that particular area? And then you can check the zoning map, but the zoning map's more and more misleading. If you look at, uh, a lot of the older, established, um, I gotta take that back. Once you start getting, um, east of 17th Avenue and south of railroad tracks, you see a lot of R1B, single-family zoning. And that had, excuse me, um, pretty hefty setbacks, but it protected that single-family integrity. The trend now is, is everyone's seeking rezonings in the R2s, the R3s, because it gives them greater flexibility. It's smaller setbacks, smaller lot area requirements, doesn't mean that they're building to that, but if you look around the Moriarty Park area, that's R3 zoning. There's 300,000-plus homes that were built there 15 years ago that were some of the more expensive homes at that time in an R3 zoning. And the developers done that, um, south of 20th Street 2, uh, as well, and west of Main Avenue, is they want the flexibility so that if they wanna do a 65-foot wide lot with 6-foot side yards, they can certainly do that, but they may go up to an 80-foot lot, but they don't wanna be held to the R1B standards, which is, I think, 80 or 100 feet of frontage, 30-foot front yard setbacks, 25-foot rears, and you got 8-foot side yards. So that, we're seeing a lot more R2 and R3 zoning, um, because it provides greater flexibility, and, and now, for the longest period of time, we really didn't have developers that were doing the single-family attached. And a lot of times, you know, they can be set up, where they split them, sometimes they'll, they'll actually do them almost like a condo, but to try and address some of the needs of the housing market, they're becoming more and more popular because they can gain that additional density and get more people into homeowner, home ownership opportunities. So, long story, but comp plan, look at the future land use map, look at the major street plan. I guess the other thing I would look at is the development suitability model that's within the comp plan, because that does identify some areas that, uh, are questionable, uh, and then also just the floodplain maps.
Any other council questions or discussion? Council-
No, um, I'm in line with the way they're going.
Alright, please call the roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes. Item 10C, action on preliminary plat for Lot 1 in Block 1, and lots 1, 2, and 3 in Block 2, of Reserve 4th Edition. Mike Strucker, Community Development Director, will review this item.
Evening, so, uh, we got, sorry, four lots that are being south, um, they're split by Christine Avenue, uh, they're already zoned. The developer is just proposing to, to lay those out. There are B2 on lots 1, Block 1, and then Lot 1 and a portion of Lot 2 are B2, and then the remaining portion of, of Lot 2 and 3 are B2A. And so he just wants to lay them out. I would suspect that we'll see, um, a rezoning request in the future to clean up, um, the split zoning that's probably gonna occur on, on Lot 2, but they do have an interest. One of the things we're seeing, um, recently, trend-wise, is in some of these neighborhood areas, they're looking at a little bit higher-quality, um, office-type setting. Uh, I think the ones that really spearheaded this movement is, if you look at the development that occurred at the intersection of 22nd Avenue and 12th Street South, um, that was real eye-opening to the business community, and the developer on those particular projects generated a significant amount of interest from the business community, and they're looking at some of these, uh, other opportunities. And I believe the, um, lot on the east side of Christine along 20th, has a potential purchase agreement in place for, uh, a medical-type use down in there. So they're not real intensive, you're not gonna typically see a retail in this particular location, but it's more of a destination-type business. And so he's laying the lots out, um, ready to get them, make them available for sale. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any, is there any council questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10D, action on resolution 21-068, resolution authorizing the acquisition of real property for the I-29 Exit 130 Interchange Project. Mr. Britzman, our city attorney, will review this item.
Thank you, Mayor, this is another step of progress with respect to the interchange project. This proposed resolution would authorize the acquisition of, uh, a small parcel, uh, Lot H1, 916 square feet, as well as, uh, uh, an essential temporary easement to construct, uh, within this, uh, area of about 1 acre and, uh, .03 acres for a permanent easement, uh, in this area. A, a purchase price, uh, has been negotiated with HDR and, uh, city staff, uh, involved in that process, and, uh, this would be one of the four, uh, parcels or, uh, properties that we've been working on to acquire, uh, necessary right-of-way for the interchange. The remaining three parcels, um, I do have, you know, some hope that, that we can continue negotiations. The remaining three parcels, I do have, you know, some hope that we can continue negotiations to acquire the other ones, but they are progressing, at least with respect to right-of-way agreements. So those would be my comments on this.
Thank you. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved. Second?
They moved in second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we move on to City of Brookings' progress report. Jake, our Assistant City Manager, will present the progress report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're going to have a very special guest presenter. We'll bring him back. Nope, I guess not. All right, we'll just go with his plan. 20th Street Interchange, biggest update is the motion that you all just made right before this. They are substantially complete. As Attorney Britzman noted, we do continue negotiating with landowners for right-of-way and easements. At this time, we are moving past the certification of utilities and right-of-way, which is occurring right now. Still hopeful to bid this project yet in 2021, and on track for construction in '22 and '23. Jefferson Avenue Drainage Project, Phase 1 is complete, minus finalizing some boulevard landscaping. Phase 2 is currently underway. At this point, they've completed the water main, the sanitary sewer, and the storm sewer, and you all can see what is up next for that project. I did want to just spend one second on the sump pump collection pilot project. That is a project that's being administered by our friends and colleagues at Brookings Municipal Utilities. Essentially, what they're doing is installing a sump header, which is a separate pipe, which they can connect the residential sump pumps into that will drain into the storm sewer system. So it's essentially a collecting pipe that the residential sump pumps can go into, and they are doing that free of charge as a pilot project. We are still on track to complete this project in October of this year. I do want to credit our Assistant City Engineer Thad Dries for these awesome aerial photos. He took those with the city drone, so a little bit different perspective on some of these projects than we usually get, so appreciate his time and effort on that. Eighth Street Midary Project, Phase 1 and 2 are complete, all the lanes are open, lane striping is currently underway, and the traffic signals are operational. Some of the remaining work has come, some of the smaller kind of cleanup items, finishing up the sidewalk and ramps, the pedestrian buttons for the crossing, as well as the boulevards. Similar to last project, this one will complete in October '21 as well. Chip Seal Project, as folks may have noticed, as they drive around town, there is some fresh red rock that has been put down. City staff continues to work on the final sweeping up of that rock as we speak, as well as looking towards restriping, hopefully yet this week, beginning the week of August 23rd, and that project will complete in October of '21 as well. 15th Street South and 7th Avenue, again, this is part, that council may remember, is part of an affordable housing development in the future. In the meantime, we do have to get the streets extended, work on sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, regional detention pond, drainage channel improvements. This project did start the week of August 9th with some of the tree removal in that area. Most of this project will continue, or will complete this year. It'll be most of the earthwork and kind of underground utilities. It will carry into '22, where we'll finish up with the curb and gutter, the sidewalk and the paving. So kind of the heavy infrastructure stuff this year, and then kind of those top finishes will take place next year to allow for development in that area. The Brookings Police Department did receive a Dodge Durango and Charger squads from the upfitter. They are fully operational and have been well-received by the department and currently en route. We did enjoy National Night Out this last month. It had about 700 attendees to enjoy dunk tanks and wells, food trunks. This was a partnership between the Brookings Police Department with the Sheriff's Office, the Highway Patrol, Game and Fish and Parks, the Fire Department, Brookings Ambulance, and University Police coming together to make a great event for all. Parks and Recreation, we see that we did enjoy the portable mini golf course at the Hillcrest Park there. That was out from late July to mid-August. We are exploring the possibility of offering this in the holding barn over the winter to provide some additional activity, so please check out our Facebook for when that becomes available. They did receive an $87,000 grant to continue the recreational trail down in Prairie Hills, that is to the southwest of the Fishback Soccer Complex that connects the neighborhood there, to continue that extension. We did close the pool again this year on August 15th. That wrapped up with the annual Soggy Doggy event. We did see that revenue was up a little bit this year in comparison to our last full year in 2019. We attribute that to a drier year with more sun. 2019 was a little bit more wet and rainy, so we had a great year at the pool for many to enjoy bringing that activity back. The library hosted a unique event on July 20th, where they offered a pet parade. They had about 152 attendees for that event and 20 participants in the event. Most of the participants were dogs, but we did have a rabbit and a hamster as well. The library will be bringing back their escape rooms in September. The challenge is yet to be announced, so please stay tuned for that. Registration will open on the week of September 20th, and the escape room itself will be held September 28th through September 30th. Swiftell Center did bring a concert back, which is fantastic. They had Willie Nelson on August 11th. There was about a little over 3,000, 3,100 attendees, and this was the first event that Spectra ran here at the Swiftell Center, and they had great response from their leadership, bringing folks in from corporate Wyoming, Sioux City, and as well as Sioux Falls. So there were a number of folks that were on deck to help out with that event, and by all accounts was very successful. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Jake. Okay, any introduction to topics for future discussion by any of the council? Seeing none, our next meeting, September 14th. As of right now, we don't have any first readings. We have no contracts or change orders. We have a second reading on the tax levy and the budget amendment, and then the conditional use permit for the business and residential use on Folsom Edition. Anything else?
I would mention that we will be bringing back that ordinance to amend it in October, when the state gets their regulations done. So you'll see more Mike Struck next meeting.
All right. Do adjourn.
So moved. Second?
They moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Aye.